Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Dairy School Board. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We are all here tonight. Lynn should be back presently. But in the meantime, we will move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from January 11th. I will begin with the public minutes. And a second?
Second.
A first by Derek and a second by Jessica. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And now approval for the non-public minutes?
So moved.
And a second? A first by Jessica and a second by Paul and one abstention by Derek, who was not at that meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Derek. Our next item on the agenda is the Next Charter School, who is our school presentation tonight. We are excited to hear what you folks have been up to. Joe Crawford, I welcome you and your students to the front.
Thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. They're going to come up and talk to you in just a minute. I thought I'd give you just a real quick update about how things are going in Next and then turn it over to the people that are more interesting than me, which are students and staff members. It's been a little while since we've been here, but it's always a great opportunity to kind of talk about what we've been up to and the organization. This is, hopefully, you'll get a chance to see some good pictures because they're all pictures of our kids, which are kind of the most important thing. These are, you know, the last couple of years have obviously been pretty challenging, pretty difficult, but we've been really fortunate to just have a really great staff, student body, and a lot of support. So, most of you know a lot about us, so I won't go into a ton of detail, but I'm happy to answer questions when and if they come up. It's difficult to believe that Next opened in August of 2013, so that means this is our ninth school year. And we have now graduated 77 students, and we have 14 students that are set to graduate this spring. And that'll be our seventh graduation ceremony. This is a good, this is a nice advertisement for Gilbert H. Middle School here. So, we've done a little bit of rethinking of our mission and tried to clarify what it is that we're here to do because that's really what the mission of an organization is, right? It's its purpose. Why does it exist? And so, you know, this mission statement isn't all that different from our original mission statement, but I think we've tried to clarify what we're trying to achieve and the ways in which we're trying to do it. So, anybody that has ever been to Next or knows much about Next know that we're really small. There are 80 students enrolled. And when parents call me and they say, hey, charter schools are supposed to have this specific mission, you know, some are art schools, some are STEM schools, what are you guys? And I try to explain that, you know, we're a very personalized, flexible space where students can come and feel like they belong, like they're part of a community, and have the freedom to kind of move through their education at their own pace, at a pace that makes the most sense for them. That's our buddy Mackay, who's performing. We do a lot of community activities, so I think this might be one of our open-mic nights or open-mic performances. I do remember the performance. It was pretty good. There've been a lot of good things that have happened over the last nine years. We do a lot of kind of outdoor learning and trips. This is actually a picture from an overnight field trip that we took our students on to Mayhew Island, which is an island on Newfoundland Lake. We've gone there several times, and these guys had just completed a kind of an advisory challenge. We, as you probably know, charter schools have to be reauthorized every five years. So, we were reauthorized in 2019. Now, I know that sounds kind of weird since we opened in 2013, but the state went through sort of a, had a hard time staying on track and keeping up with the authorization. So, we submitted our kind of renewal paperwork, but it took about a year and a half or so before we actually got fully before the state board. As you guys know, we signed a lease with the Dairy School District back in 2016, and I think we're in year six of that lease now, the space at Gilbert H. Hudd. We've worked with the League of Innovative Schools to try to kind of learn from other schools in that, in the area of non-traditional education. And one of the things we're really proud of is internships. All of our students have to do an internship. I have three students with me today, and two of them are actually going to be graduating this year and they're both pursuing, are in the process of, actually, I think you guys might have had some interviews today. So, maybe we'll get some updates on their internships. But the nice thing about the internship program is it really allows us to build partnerships with local businesses and organizations. We've had some really cool ones that are pretty cool. Just to give you a little overview, that recruitment, we're in our recruitment time right now, and things are continuing to go well. We receive a lot of applications each year. So, last year, we received 64 applications. We ended up bringing in 30 students last year, so that was actually a lot. We grew by five students from 75 to 80, and we had some students leave. We had some students, we had a pretty good-sized graduating class last year. So, we're on track. Things are continuing to kind of progress. We expect we'll probably have between 20 and 25 open seats this year. And you guys can just cut me off at any point, but I'm just trying to share as many things as I can and then get out of here so you can meet some of our kids, and they're going to talk to you about a new program that we started this year. This is an interesting picture. This is also at Mayhew Island. And I'll tell you a little bit more about the person who's running across that rope up there in the air. You're going to meet her in just a minute. But we have several goals. One of them is obviously to continue to work with the Dairy School District. We've been working on a strategic plan. We sat and did some work on that last week. We're also in the process of trying to do some improvements to our space to kind of move some things around so that it kind of maximizes the need for kids. And then, you know, we just talked a little bit last week about ways in which we can collaborate with the staff in the Dairy School District to maybe learn from each other and share some of the things that we've been doing at Next, and that extends to Pinkerton as well. And then, we always spend a lot of time trying to work on relationships with other organizations. One of the organizations that we built a new relationship with this year is First Robotics and the First Robotics Program. And I'm going to have Devaney and the students come up in just a minute and talk about that. But I'd be remiss without sort of showing you some cool pictures of our kids. So, I think, I was looking, I think it's been two graduation cycles since we last came here, so I figured I'd show you pictures of the last two graduations. Two years ago, at the, just at the beginning of this pandemic, we held our graduation ceremony outside at Tupelo Music Hall. As you can see, Scott Hayward and the team over at Tupelo are really, really generous to let us work there. So, you see, that was our parking lot outdoor celebration. Last year, we actually held an outdoor graduation in front of Gilbert H. Hudd. And for any of you old-school Dairy people, the way that the Hood Memorial Junior High School or Gilbert H. Middle School used to hold their graduations right out front on the steps, and that's what we did last year. These guys were just waiting to go out on stage, and they were pretty pumped. So, at this point, I'd like to invite kind of an, well, a very interesting person, but with a kind of a unique story. So, I'm going to ask Devaney to come on up here. Devaney Whiting is a staff member at Next. And Devaney is that young woman who's running across the rope on the beach in that picture. Devaney is a Next Charter School graduate. Devaney graduated in 2017 from high school.
Yep, I did.
Went off to University of New Hampshire to study, I want to say mechanical engineering.
That's correct.
Okay. And then decided, hey, maybe, I'm going to let, Devaney can talk about that, but maybe instead of being an engineer, why not do a year of service? So, Devaney is an AmeriCorps member who works as a mentor for our students, and it's, I think largely because of Devaney, that we started a robotics program. And Devaney kind of brought the knowledge of Next, having, you know, gone to school at Next and graduated and studying engineering at UNH. She kind of brought those things together, and because of her, now we have a pretty cool engineering program. So, with no further ado, I'm going to let Devaney explain a little bit, maybe, about how you ended up with that. And then, I'm going to go grab students, have them sit down, and they can tell you just real briefly about their robotics competition that they took part in this past weekend. You want to talk, and I'll go get them?
Sure. Hi, thank you guys so much for having us. This is super new for me, too. Like Joe said, I graduated from Next, and I've always been sort of caught between teaching and engineering. I went to school for engineering, and then I decided I couldn't do engineering anymore. And I came back to Next as an AmeriCorps staff member. And First Robotics is something that I participated in, and I really felt like it gave me a leg up in pretty much everything, in school, in jobs that I had, internships. And I thought, that's such a good opportunity. I want to bring it to the kids. But I didn't think, I didn't think that there would be any interest until I started talking to the kids, and there was. I mean, here they are. And so, this is a pretty good group we've got tonight. We've got mechanical, we've got coding, and we've got our art sub-teams represented. So, hopefully, they can, they can tell us a little bit about what we've been doing this year.
Absolutely. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Max Laurenieri. I'm a student at Next Charter School. Personally, I watch these on YouTube, various YouTubers who work in mechanical engineering or electrical engineering. They have various degrees and different things, but I really like how this club was a good integration of STEM. And it allows for, you know, various different subcategories, like art and the coding of the robot, and then, of course, the mechanical of the robot, how it's built and all of that. But more importantly, I like how much it's brought our community together, for sure. I've talked to a lot of people that I would have never seen myself talking to at the school. It's my last year at the school as well, and I wanted to take the opportunity to be able to do a program like this. I thought it was just excellent to actually have this, you know. And we had our ups and downs with trying to do certain drive trains for the robot and not having enough motors and trying to order them, and they didn't come in in time. So, yeah, a whole lot of fun. And inevitably, we built our robot, and we went to the competition, and we tried our best. And what, we won an award, right?
They did. They won the Judges' Choice Award, which is an award that goes to a team that they feel is exceptional but doesn't fit into a category, which I feel like is pretty typical for Next, right? We're pretty cool, but we don't really fit. So, that's what we got. They got the Judges' Choice. Do you want to talk a little bit about the mechanisms that we have or how to play the game or anything like that?
Yeah, so, pretty much, the, just to sum it down, the main task of the game, we're collecting cargo on one end of the arena and bringing it to your warehouse of your team. There was two teams. Each team was compiled of two robots with, you know, and there was people from all over. We had from different schools, from different, just people who decided that they wanted to compete in the competition as well. And that was cool to see as well, everybody coming together in that way. But, yeah, and so, bringing the cargo across was one task, bring it to your warehouse. Another task was spinning a turntable, so we had to build a wheel to spin the turntable to bring cargo into the arena. Someone was loading it onto it so it could...
These are rubber ducks. The cargo is rubber ducks.
Right. That's important, no, definitely.
Yep.
So, what we had to build was a mechanism to grab the cargo and then think to spin the conveyor belt. And so, that, we didn't actually build anything to grab the cargo until the day of the competition. We were, you know, sitting at our table going, what do we do? I don't know. Someone came over, gave us poster board, and we had painter's tape. So, that's how that mechanism came together. Very colorful, green poster board.
But it worked!
Right, exactly. And by all faith, we won that award, right? Yeah. But the point of the game was very, it wasn't straightforward for all of us. It was our first time in the competition, so the fact that we were able to make those mechanisms was pretty surprising.
Yeah.
A lot of fun.
Yeah, and you can't, I mean, as a mechanical engineer, I understand that you, you can build whatever you want, but it won't work unless you can program it. And so, our main, our main programming guy is Aiden here.
Experienced.
Do you want to talk about programming that mechanism last minute? Or anything else that you had to do this year?
Well, effectively, for starters, to actually make the robot code, I had to learn to, me and another person had to learn to code in Java completely from scratch. Didn't know jack when the season started. So, that was amazingly fun. And after, like, after they got everything starting to work smoothly, it actually went pretty well until last-minute changes, and then more last-minute changes, and then more last-minute changes. And I'm very surprised that, like, the, we actually got the robot to function. But it, overall, it went pretty well, and it was a very good experience.
Yeah, you guys did a fantastic job, as far as I'm concerned.
And I forgot to mention, we have a name to our team. It's called the Cellar, we're called the Cellar Dwellers.
And why are we called the Cellar Dwellers?
Oh, yeah, because Next is in the basement of Foot, so we're like, yeah. Very, very fitting, very fitting. But the shirt, you know, I didn't just snap my fingers and the logo came up. This was...
Ash, do you want to talk about our journey to getting team shirts?
Journey to getting team shirts?
It sure was a journey. It started off, like, with us just designing, like, figuring out what we wanted to have on, like, a shirt or a button or whatever. So far, we haven't done buttons, but we have the shirt, so that's a win. I don't know.
So, Ash had designed this logo and sent it to me, and by the time we got the T-shirts together and what we wanted to order, it was too late to order them. So, what did we do next?
We figured out that we could just do it ourselves by acquiring, like, the amount of, like, sizes needed for all the members. And then got some, like, vinyl, some heat-pressed vinyl, and then with a cricket, we cut out the design and put it on there.
Yeah, so that was another thing I was kind of pleasantly surprised by. I showed up, I think, three minutes late, and there were eight students crammed into the front doorway area waiting to get in on a Saturday morning
That was fun.
to do robotics and to make these shirts. And they manufactured all their own shirts. So, that was really, really cool. Anything else that you, the art team did in particular that you want to talk about?
I know some sectors did, like, they, like, helped make models of, like, the...
The field pieces?
The field pieces. One person in particular, like, made our, like, game piece for it, but sadly, we couldn't use it, I think. I forget. Why?
Yeah.
Was it just, like, too big?
It was, it did not fit within the constraints. But, yeah, it looked cool. Yeah, any, any questions for these guys?
For...
Devaney, I think it's aw, oh, sorry.
I think it's awesome that you're back. I think it's awesome that you're back. That's really part of a great story for Next. Are you all seniors? And if you are, what are you going to do when you graduate?
I can answer that question.
Senior, junior.
So, this is my last year at Next. Personally, one thing, I'm interested in a whole bunch of things, but personally, one thing I like is electrical and electrical engineering. So, I've definitely considered, you know, I've been a lot more inspired to do such to see what I can do with electronics with the, with the degree. And, yeah, I have to say, this club is one contributing factor to that and something I'll never forget, to be honest.
Our other seniors over here.
I don't have a concrete plan, but I'm planning for something in art. I'm open to whatever. And this club has really helped me, like, discover what is needed if I wanted to go into, like, maybe, like, printing designs on clothes and selling them. Maybe not the selling part, but at least the first part of getting the materials and putting them together.
Did you have something for your internship today?
I did.
Do you want to talk about it, or is that secret?
I don't know. It was just like, my internship, I, like, am just starting it. It's at the Let's Make Music and Art area on Hampstead. So far, I've just kind of, like, helped kids, like, make art and stuff. Not fully, but like, if they need paint or something, I helped with that. I don't know. That's about it.
That's really cool.
Well, that's great. You can inspire younger students, like Devaney has inspired you, right? So, that's great. Pass the torch. You going to continue with robotics next year, or will you be at Next, next year?
I'm trying to figure that out right now. My, my term is only nine months long.
Yep.
And so, I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly where I'll be next year, but hopefully, it'll be nearby at least, and I'll be able to continue mentoring this team.
I love that.
Robotics will 100% still exist.
Excellent. That's what I was hoping.
So, I want to thank you all for coming here tonight and sharing with us what you're doing at robotics and sharing your obvious passion for what you did. And I think one of the things that would be great for some of the people in the audience that aren't as familiar with Next is to maybe hear from one of you why you chose Next and what makes it a little different than maybe a traditional high school and why it works for you. Because I think it's a great option in Dairy, but I'm not sure every community member understands why it is different and what it can offer kids. Because every, everyone does need something different. So, if one of you is willing to share a little about why you picked Next and how it's different, I think that could really help the community understand how kids can find a place that's a better fit for them.
Yeah, so, personally, my first year of high school, I went to Pinkerton Academy, and, you know, I thought, let me go to, I'll go to the big school with all the kids, and I'll see what that's like, and...
Very overwhelming.
I found, yeah, right, and I found myself caught up in the drama, and it distracted me from my schoolwork. I think I graduated or finished that year with five and a quarter credits, and most people get six, and I was just, I felt a little bit down on my luck. And then I come to Next, and that five and a quarter credits actually came out to be 33% because of how the system was built. And it was like, okay. Gave me that little bit more and more of a confidence to keep working, keep trying. And then, once I was there, the community was tight-knit, and I was like, this is just what I need. I can't get caught up in the drama. All I can do is focus on my work. And so, you know, now, about right on track to graduate, and, you know, it's awesome. It's an awesome feeling. I've never regretted coming to Next. Not once.
Maybe someone else can talk about what, how our classes are different than a traditional school.
I feel like I'm being pressured to speak.
You did agree to come.
Classes are, like, they're generally structured around the student, well, not structured around the students. They're structured around non-traditional topics, such as when you're doing, when you're trying to take an economics class, instead of learning economic theory, you'll be learning, for instance, how it works in practice and, for instance, what you would act, like, if you wanted to become economist, what you would actually be doing. And... It's just the voice that noise. And inside of the classes, you have student, you have student focus as students propel themselves forward, and teachers generally, they give lists, they help. And by the end of the module, you'll see the students actively, like, actively going the distance and trying to finish their subject and learn about it by themselves.
Do you have anything to add?
On a specific topic?
Just about Next in general?
I don't know. I feel like Next definitely helps fill, like, a niche of classes. Like, it's not just, oh, you're taking English, oh, you're taking physics. You might have, like, a class that's, that focuses more on, like, one specific part of something. I know this isn't, like, similar to that, but I remember I had a class called Good and Evil, where you tried to, like, figure out if humans were born good or evil. I don't know.
That sounds like maybe an ethics class.
Yeah. Form of ethic.
Yeah, I think the reason that we're able to do this, that might answer your question a little more, is that we work off of the competency system, and all of our classes are project-based. And so, each class might fill one or two competencies, and there's a project at the end of each one. So, you end up with really weird class names, like Good and Evil and other such things like that.
Which comes in writing an essay about are humans good and evil? That is very fun to write.
Right, exactly. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. I actually, I served on the Next Board for a while, and I really enjoyed it. But I think for the benefit of the community, I don't think people realize we have this, not everyone realizes the option we have out there for people that are looking for a different mode of learning. So, that was more a question for the benefit of others. But does, do any other members of the board have anything to say? But we appreciate you being here, and we really thank you for sharing your thoughts about robotics and what you're doing in school.
And I think you've done a tremendous job. You have mentioned several times tonight what you realize that are not the value of community, problem-solving, coming together as a team. And you also mentioned the challenges that you embraced. You took on those challenges. You continue to take those on. And I think we all admire you for that. We also admire you for coming tonight and presenting. This has been so engaging. Eric has said for all night. I think the rest of us could, too, and just listen to what you have to say. You're extremely engaging. You have a lot to offer. You have a lot to offer our community in general. I hope that you've garnered interest from our community tonight and support from our community, from the robotics team all, all the way through the process of Next and who you are and who you represent. I'm extremely proud, as superintendent of the school district, to have you present tonight. It's been a long time, you know, since we've had any presentations from Next because of that void last year for in-person presentations. I think more than that, too, and one question I have to end the night or to end the presentation, is Mr. Crawford talked a lot about outdoor learning. And we talk a lot about that with our younger students as well, younger being our pre-K through eight students. Can one of you just explain or expand on the outdoor learning experiences you've had, maybe that are real personal in nature to you, and how that's expanded your learning repertoire at Next?
That's an excellent question. I just, I have to sit for a second on the answer. That's definitely a good one. I think personally, working with my dad, who happens to be here tonight, growing up, just here and there, I've done small assembly stuff with him. And I think, you know, incidentally, it's helped me a lot in robotics because I've been able to put together the hardware and kind of know how that sort of thing works, and have the intuition and not think twice about those sort of things, whereas I don't think I would have been as inclined without it. So, that's one thing for sure. As Mr. Crawford said, the overnight trips have definitely been one of the most memorable things I've done at Next because it's, like, especially the first one. You come to this new school, and it's like, it's going to be 80 kids, so you're already not sure how that's going to go. And then you meet all of them, and it's just, like, everybody's fully engaged in each other. Everyone wants to know about each other and, you know, get into each other's lives and, like, be there for each other. And it's just such a community feeling that, that first overnight trip, I think it's, I think it's an excellent thing that Next does.
Everyone in the community's got your back.
Right, right, and I could say that and know that it's true.
Do you guys remember any of the places we've gone?
Yes. The first place was, the first place I went, the first overnight trip was Mount Sunapee. We went, we camped up on the mountain, and we also did a couple of the activities that were down by the bottom of the mountain.
Oh, yeah. We didn't go on a trip last year.
Right.
Now, I'm just...
Overd.
I'm like, these guys. But we went on a trip this year. Does anybody remember where we went this year?
I'm going to get it today.
I don't know if I'm causing the problem.
I don't even remember. Where did we go?
I didn't go. I had a...
Oh, no.
It's like, I have a bad memory.
We went camping.
So, we went camping at Greenfield State Park. Yeah, we went camping in Greenfield State Park.
Rained like the death.
And it rained the entire time. You guys remember?
Yeah, it was great. Yeah, it was great.
It was amazing. Everyone was so panicked.
Uh earlier this year, we were fortunate enough to um be able to take a group of students went to Salem, Mass, and we explored the city. So we had a, we had a project that was um focused on um the witch trials, uh Salem witch trials and uh a group of students went to Salem, Mass. The other half uh chose to go sailing uh out of Portsmouth on the gondolo. If any of you have had a chance to sail on the gondolo out of uh Prescott Park. Uh pretty cool experience to sail up the river um on a gondolo.
It's the only one in the world.
It's the only one, yeah. The only one in the world.
So that's a, you know, example of some some kind of outdoorsy stuff. We're in the doldrums of winter right now, so we haven't done a lot of outdoor stuff, but we'll be, we'll be getting back to it as soon as it thaws.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you so much.
So the next item on our agenda is the Honeywell contract, but we do, the Honeywell update. But we do need to move that item because our presenters are in another meeting and they are not ready right now. So I would accept a motion to move the Honeywell cost avoidance report from item number three to item number nine after policy so that that they can finish their their other meeting and be ready for us.
So moved.
Second.
A first by Brenda and a second by Derek, all in favor? I, motion carries. So our next item would have been the Pinkerton Academy update, but it looks like Jacob is not here tonight. So we look forward to seeing him at the next meeting. That moves us to our next item, which is the New Hampshire School Board Association contract for superintendent. So for those of you that looked online at the attachments, we did post the contract. The way our policies work, we need to vote to approve spending money on the contract. And then we also need to vote to approve to give the chair the authority to appoint members of the committee. And just to be clear, the way this committee is formed, it is not that I'm appointing anyone. There will be twelve members on this committee. Two will be teachers, one elementary, one middle. Two will be parents. One elementary, middle and or someone from deep, because we do have a preschool program in the district. Two will be assistants, same division. Two will be administration, same division, middle school, deep teacher, middle school, deep and deep and elementary. Three will be school board members, two will be assistants. And one person will be from the SEU. And how this will work is I will send out a request to to the people involved and ask them to come forward with names for me, so I will not be doing the pick. The people that will be picking are the people that know who will best represent us. So that is the format, so everyone knows. And the contract is with the New Hampshire School Board Association. They are experts in doing these searches. They know New Hampshire well. They also know the needs of superintendents. We have been assigned Alan Party of the Bryan Group, which is who who they have assigned us to run the search. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Before we? If not, I would accept a motion to approve spending fifteen thousand dollars, which is the cost of the contract to for to employ the New Hampshire School Boards Association to help us to facilitate our superintendent search.
Chair, I'll make a motion to expend fifteen thousand dollars plus expenses to the New Hampshire School Board Association for the superintendent search.
And is there a second? So a first by Derek and a second by Paul. Is there any discussion before we take a vote? If not, I will I'll take a roll call vote. Lynn?
Yes.
Derek? Paul? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brenda?
I'm all abstaining from that vote. I'm on the New Hampshire School Board Association Association Board.
Thank you. And the chair votes yes. So motion passes. So the second motion we need is we need to grant, you need to grant the chair the authority to assign members. And as I said before, I will not be actually assigning members. I'll just be reaching out to different groups to get from them who their representatives will be. The only group, the only people I would be assigning would be the school board members. And those school board members would be Brenda, myself, and Jessica.
Motion to allow the chair to form a superintendent search committee.
And a second? A first by Derek and a second by Paul. Is there any discussion or questions before a vote? If not, I'll do another roll call vote. Lynn? Derek? Paul? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brenda? And the chair votes yes. Motion passes. So just for the information of the public, that contract was posted online unsigned because we had not had not had it approved yet. There will be, once that committee is formed, the that information will be available and those meetings will, that information will be available and we will be begin the process of of finding the, our next superintendent. We, our next item tonight is personnel. Mary Ann?
Good evening. I have one nomination under personnel. I would like to nominate Miranda Kelsey for a special education teacher at South Range Elementary School.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first by Brenda and a second by Derek, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. And Mary Ann, you have the floor again for the calendar.
All right, um I can review the calendar that is proposed for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um I do have copies, if you would like, of the New Hampshire Suggested School Calendar and of the Pinkerton Academy Calendar, if you would so like, I have those with me. With the proposed calendar in front of you and it was posted online, teachers would begin on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. On Monday, August twenty-ninth, it would be the fourth day of our teacher's workshop and sixth grade orientation. This was also formerly the open house for elementary schools during pre-COVID times. In the past two years during COVID times, it's been the open house for kindergarten students and new families only, so that would remain to be seen. However, it would still be our um sixth grade orientation half a day on Monday, August twenty-ninth. According to the calendar, Tuesday, August thirtieth will be the first day of school for all students. Friday, September second through Monday, September fifth would be designated as our Labor Day weekend. It would be a four-day weekend as is, has been typical in the past few years. Um that would align with Pinkerton Academy. Going down the calendar, Friday, September thirtieth would be an early release day. In October, um we have Columbus Day. In November, designated teacher workshop day on the tenth for um and that that would be a no-school day for students, teacher workshop day, followed by Veterans Day on the eleventh. Thanksgiving recess is that three-day weekend beginning on Wednesday, the twenty-third. So it's when, uh it's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. In December, that would be the designated um school holiday and holiday recess, December twenty-sixth through January second. That's in alignment with the state and uh Pinkerton Academy as well. Moving to January, Martin Luther King Junior Day on the sixteenth. February remains untouched at this time and on March thirty-first would be designated as an early release day. In April, there is a school recess again, the last week of April, February, the last week of eight, uh February is also our school recess designated as our school recess, just as it is uh this year, by the way. In May, there's another early release day on the nineteenth that would be designated at this time to health and technology professional development. And in June, if um all goes as planned, June thirteenth would be the current last day for students. Wednesday, June fourteenth would be a teacher workshop day. That's if students get on all hundred and eighty days of school. Uh there have to be five designated um snow days in the calendar. There you, thereby you see those in in parentheses. And um there is the proposed calendar for the school year twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. With the school recesses being proposed in December, in February and in April as designated and follow, and those follow the um state proposed calendar. And they align with Pinkerton Academy as well, all of the school recesses. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar.
And a second?
Second.
A first by Derek and a second by Jessica. Does anyone have any questions before we?
Yeah, I was gonna, I I just have a, I I get that we align with Pinkerton. Um I get that the state calendar, has there, I'm just wondering, has there any been, ever been any serious thought about potentially getting rid of one of the February or April breaks and doing more of a spring break? And then everyone gets out sooner in the, at the end of the year? Cause I know a lot of schools outside of this region do that. And I'm not saying we need to consider it today, but has that ever been considered?
We we have taught, we have discussed that um as a leadership team. In the past, we did not discuss it this year. Um however, we have discussed that as a leadership team in the past. So we did follow the um proposed state calendar being that we would align with the February and the April break. Yet certainly that would be up for discussion.
Yeah, I I mean, I know it's hard with Pinkerton.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I know it's just hard with Pinkerton, because if they say, hey, we're gonna stay March and April, and like you've got kids that are in high school and K through eight, then I can't imagine what parents would do with that, but um.
Another difficult part is we have staff from several surrounding towns and if they don't do the same then we're trying to cover. So it's it's almost like New Hampshire itself would have to go to a spring break and not just us, so. And people, it seems to be that every couple of years it comes up and talks more about it. Maybe someday that'll move towards it.
Yeah, alright, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
And the, and the actual beginning date of school did not align with Pinkerton. They have their teacher workshops beginning on the twenty-third. They have more teacher workshop days. They have because they have a new staff, teacher workshop days for two days, then they have to take into consideration their general population beside their new teacher workshop. And then they have, Pinkerton, what they do is they have a freshman um junior orientation day, then they have a sophomore senior orientation day, which moves them to um take that Labor Day weekend as we do this year, as we propose from September second through fifth. And then their first day for everybody would be the the sixth. So they have a lot of days in between. They actually start a day earlier for teachers, I believe, than we do. Yes, we start the twenty-fourth and they start the twenty-third, but that is with their new teachers. So they just have a lot of different days put in ahead of time than we do. But I understand your question about the the recesses.
Is everyone ready to take a vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mary Ann, policies?
We will get that published on the website, so for parents and uh get that put out to parents so they can make plans for next year. Okay, policy next, correct? I will begin with a first read of Policy GCG, which is part-time and substitute professional staff employment. And the changes that I will review begin in paragraph three, which shift from twenty-nine consecutive days to twenty consecutive days. Paragraph four, thirty consecutive days to twenty consecutive school days. And in that same paragraph, thirtieth day to twenty-first day. And the next paragraph, thirty days to twenty days. And then under the note, um I will read the new note, all part-time and substitute employees must undergo a criminal history records check and complete required district training prior to any employment. So that is a change as well. Policy committee met and has vetted um this policy. Any questions?
Yeah, Mary Ann, we take a lead on this from the uh New Hampshire School Board Association?
Uh this is a statutory reference.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions about this policy? Okay, we can move on to the next one.
Okay, Austin?
Good evening. Okay, Policy IJ, instructional materials. Uh this was vetted through uh lawyer Diane Gur. It's been cleaned up and bullets were added. And IJL is also a first reading, library material selection and adoption. New New Hampshire School Board Association has a one-sentence policy on this. We had our Director of uh Literacy, Dr. Sarah Taylor, look at this and um researched other districts and so forth and came up with a much more comprehensive and uh um policy and and used a lot of the um information that they have that that run the libraries right now. And so I I guess I'll move those two first before I go to the next one because they're a little bit separate. So IJ instructional materials and IJL, library material selection and adoption are up for a first read. Questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Austin about either of these policies? Austin, was there anything that particularly changed about this policy or is it a new policy?
Um the the library one is pretty much a brand-new policy. Um like I said, uh we didn't, we did not have that policy. Uh the school board only had the one sentence and we thought it was important to uh provide a lot more information in that policy. And so after doing that research and looking through what um we have for our um goals and objectives through our library plans and so forth, we came up with that uh more extensive policy. Policy JICD, first reading, um we actually did um August of the summer, we um we had this policy, but um it has reference to JIC dash R, which is the new code of conduct. So we had to update that here, once that was approved. And on page page four, number seven, expulsion. This fall, there was a new um statute that uh redefined uh the word expulsion. So we removed what we had for the definition there before and put in the definition um for uh that's been updated in number seven on page four. And that was outside of the JI, references to JIC dash R. That was the major change in that policy. And those are all up for a first read.
Did you have anything to say about JICK bullying? Or is that Mary Ann?
It's gotta be Mary Ann.
Switch back to me. Trying to keep everyone awake. Any questions about that or am I good? Okay. So I have um Policy JICK, Student Safety and Violence Prevention Bullying. This has also been vetted by our policy committee. This has also been vetted by our policy committee, and has also gone through our attorney after internal changes were made. I will go through the two basic overall changes to this policy. One is in terminology used. So in this policy, as you go through and do a comparison to our current policy, there are, there are changes really noted on page two. And if you look at page two, under section three, you will notice that much of the language has changed in, in alignment to respondent, the language has changed in alignment to respondent, complainant, and victim. And so you will notice those changes throughout. There is one section that victim is used in exchange for complainant, where complainant just would not make sense in the context of that sentence. So that is why we still leave the word victim in as a complainant. Otherwise, respondent has replaced perpetrator in the policy. So that is a main crux of this change of this policy, is the language. In section three, conduct is now, has now replaced alleged act, and a lot of this is in alignment with the current policy ACA that we went over, and has been approved in prior meetings. So you will notice the language has changed throughout in the policy. One of the other changes in the policy is the reporting form. We have now aligned this reporting form with the forms in ACA. So you'll note that the reporting form is different. It's called Bullying, Cyberbullying, Initial Report Form, instead of just Report Form. It's called Initial Report Form. The other significant change in this policy is noted in the last page, on page six, under Roman numeral seven. And that is the category Sexual Harassment or Other Discrimination Based on a Legally Protected Category. So that's the section that is, has also been changed and added. It also refers to other policies that we have in the district. So those are the significant changes, and they are also made throughout this policy, as I said, in terms of language and in reference to the forms, and then Roman numeral seven has been added. Does anyone have any questions about any of the policies? These are just first readings, so there's no motions needed. If not, we will review these again on second reading, and we will now move on to Honeywell, if they are online and ready for their update. So just so the audience knows, they are joining us remotely, so that's what the delay is, that we're looking to connect them, and you will be able to see them up on the television screen up above.
I will send them a text message to let them know that we're ready. They were hoping to be on between seven-thirty to seven-forty-five, so if, I don't know if we wanna
Do my report if you want.
Move on, I will
Sure, I would take, I would take a motion to move the Honeywell update to after the superintendent's updates, as they are not quite ready for us.
A motion to move the Honeywell agenda item to a later date in the meeting when Honeywell is with us.
And a, and a second?
Second.
A first by Derek and a second by Lynn, all in favor? Thank you very much, and I apologize to the audience for a bit of the musical chairs for the item, the agenda items tonight, but we want to work with everyone, so you can all hear what they have to say. Mary Ann? Okay, good evening again. The filing period for candidates for school board is open, and applications will be accepted at the Office of the Superintendent of Schools by School District Clerk Ms. Mary Ellen Tagliatella. The remaining days in the file period are Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, from eight AM to four PM, Thursday, January twenty-seventh, from eight AM to four PM, and Friday, January twenty-eighth, from eight AM to five PM. The delivery session will be held on Saturday, February fifth, beginning at ten AM at West Running Brook Middle School. It'll be held in the gymnasium. Town school elections will be held on Tuesday, March eighth, at Calvary Bible Church, one forty-five Hampstead Road. All districts, districts one, two, three, and four, will vote at Calvary. Polls will be opened from seven AM until eight PM. At this time, our numbers indicate that Rockingham County and Derry continue to be at a substantial level. The number of newly identified COVID-19 cases in our school district during the week of January seventeenth through the twenty-first totaled one hundred and twenty-one cases. As I continue to report, the level of community transmission in Rockingham County for the week of January twenty, seventeenth through the twenty-first remains at substantial, and the current face covering status for the week of January twen, seventeenth through the twenty-first remains at substantial. Oh, universal, sorry about that. I'm getting ahead of myself. The following provides an update with data from Rockingham County as of Sunday, January twenty-third. The PCR test positivity is, seven-day average is nineteen percent, and the number of new infections per hundred thousand population over the prior fourteen days was equal, is equal to two thousand five hundred and ninety-five. As a district, we continue with layers of protection that we have been implementing in schools, and sincerely appreciate the, the support that our families continue to show in keeping students home who show any signs of illness. An area in which our school district is seeking assistance from parents, guardians, and/or community members is, is that of middle school's spring athletic team coaches. Current spring coaching positions are vacant at this time include spring boys and girls' track coaches at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School, spring boys and girls' track coaches at West Running Brook Middle School, and a baseball coach at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School. Since the spring athletic season is scheduled to begin on March twenty-eighth, interested applicants are requested to complete an online application and call the Office of the Superintendent of Schools for a fingerprint appointment as soon as possible. That process is often lengthy. By the time you get your fingerprints, and then we get them into the DOE, to the Department of Safety, it's some, it's very often a lengthy process. So I ask that anybody who is, has any interest at all, if you want to call the schools and, and talk about the vacancy, and get an idea of what that entails, please feel free to call Gilbert H. Hood and/or West Running Brook. You can ask for the athletic director. If they're not available, you certainly can ask for one of the administrators, and they can lead you through that coaching position. The athletic director is probably the primary, primary person to speak to, and then fill out the online application and get your fingerprint appointment set up at the, at our office. So that would be really helpful, and we ask for any community interests that we can get, so that our students can have an exceptional middle school experience for the spring, because they really have had all the activities presented to them and available to them for the fall and winter. So thank you in advance for stepping forward and at least passing that on to anyone who's listening and any of your friends. In addition to the five coaching vacancies that I just mentioned, the following is a list of remaining current vacancies within our Derry Cooperative School District. If you're interested in any of these vacancies, please apply online to our Derry Cooperative School District website. We have teacher and nurse substitutes available. We continue to have an Assistant Director of Student Services, a psychologist coordinator, a school psychologist, long-term, long-term substitute elementary physical education teacher, and a long-term substitute social studies teacher, two licensed clinical therapists, and three speech and language pathologists, four child nutrition cook servers, five elementary reading assistants, five custodians, and twenty-one special education assistants. So if anyone is interested, please send your application in online, and if you have any questions about any of those positions, please feel free to call our office, six oh three, four three two, one two one zero, and we can help, you know, relatively define those positions as well. If you have any questions or concerns about any of those, and concerns, what I mean is anything that you think you might be available to apply for, or any questions at all, please feel free to call our office. Kindergarten registration, that began on January tenth. The district's website will direct families to online, to the online registration forum. If you don't have access to a computer, please contact your neighborhood elementary school to begin the registration process. We really look forward to registering and welcome our newest kindergarten students and families to the Derry Cooperative School District. As of Monday, January twenty-fourth, one hundred and twenty-three students had registered. This is an increase of forty-five students since January eleventh, when seventy-eight students had registered. So that's great. The online process is working. People are calling with questions, which is fabulous, and we really look forward to getting our kindergarten students registered, and our families welcomed to the Derry Cooperative School District. Some we know already have students in our district, but others are brand-new. I know I've had a couple of calls, just very, some in dip, in-depth, a couple of in-depth questions, and that's great. So please feel free to call, and someone will get back to you. Visits to school have been wonderful during the past week, and I'm hoping to be able to continue those this week. Students' hard work and enthusiasm are evident, as is that of our teachers and staff. I really want to give a special thanks to all of our staff and substitutes who really make it possible to keep school open every day, despite the recent high absentee rate that we have had and the continuing high absentee rate that we have had. We're most grateful for the flexibility and teamwork that all of our staff continues to demonstrate during these challenging times. And just as you see tonight, it is, that's just the best part of our day, as I said prior to the meeting, the best part of our day is, is our students. I wanted to update those who are not aware of a new letter to families sent by West Running Brook on Sunday, January twenty-third. This letter was in response to the one sent by West Running Brook on January nineteenth. The January twenty-third letter in part stated that, and I quote, "Since then, we have observed a marked improvement in students consistently, wearing a properly fitted mask, and responding quickly to the encouragement prompts and support from school staff. Upon reflection, and as a result of this progress in a short amount of time, we will no longer be asking students to stay after school as an intervention, but will continue to offer encouragement, prompts, and support to students on a case-by-case basis," end quote. And in closing, I'd like to recognize and honor two very special former administrators in the Derry Cooperative School District who recently passed away. Mr. Ed Heffernan served as a former principal of Derry Village School, and was known as a gentle and kind man, who always made a significant difference in the lives of all those he touched. Ed's smile would light up a room, and he cared about students deeply. Our thoughts and sympathy are extended to his wife, Mary Claire, and their children. I got this. I got it. Mr. Glenn Blanchard, father of South Range kindergarten teacher Amy Shanet, was an outstanding teacher, assistant principal and principal of Derry Village School for twenty-eight years. Glenn always put students first to foster their learning growth and connections. He has left his indelible mark on Derry Village School community. Glenn was a fabulous leader and mentor, and a most genuine and kind friend to many of us. Our thoughts, sympathy, and friendship are extended to Glenn's wife, Sandy, and his daughter, Amy. Thank you. So we have a lot of great teachers and administrators, parents, lots of community members that give a lot to these schools, and it's been very difficult these last few months, because there's a number that we've had to, we've had to learn of their passing. So we just, we feel for all of their families, and we thank them for everything they've given to us over the years. And we know that they would be, are, they are happy to know the things that are going on now as things move forward, so we are very sorry to hear of their passing. We, I believe we are now ready for Honeywell?
I believe we are. This is the first time we're trying to do it this way, so bear with us. Jim, are you all set on your end to present?
Yes, I am, Jane. Can you hear me okay?
It's a little, little bit hard to hear.
Okay. If I speak
So we are going to try to dial back in and see if we can connect him, and if not, we will move on with some other agenda items, and either return to him, or we may have to reschedule after we can recover, find, figure out our technical difficulties.
Should we just take a five-minute recess?
Sure, it is not that, that late. We will take a five-minute recess, and hopefully we will be able to bring him back on to update us on the project.
Right, Jane. Is this any better?
Yeah, so I'd like, so since we're having some technical difficulties, I think I'd like a motion to table this agenda item, and we'll have Honeywell come in two weeks in person and provide an update, so that we can make sure that everyone can hear what they have to say.
Motion to table the Honeywell presentation till the next meeting.
A first by Lynn and a second by Derek, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So with Honeywell tabled until the next meeting, our next agenda item is the Business Administrators' Update.
Okay, I apologize for that. I think we thought it was going to work out better than that, that did. So I did have a handout for Honeywell that we can use for when they can attend in person. I also wanted to give an update, it was going to tie in with that. We use, many of you have probably heard about the rate increase for, with Eversource, and this presentation with Honeywell, we were going to talk about the continued cost savings that we've had throughout the district. But I also wanted to talk about, we have been using a third-party electricity supplier, same one as the town, and typically the town and I go out to bid together. For some reason, we're on an off-cycle of one year, so we are going to extend the contract for another year with, with Standard Power, and they are, again, they are the, the third-party supplier. The default service rate with Eversource is currently eight point eight-two-six cents per kilowatt hour. Effective August first of this coming year, that rate's going to increase to ten point six-six-nine cents per kilowatt hour. With the third-party supplier, which is Standard Power, our rate would be seven point eight cents, and we also get a reimbursement through hydro energy, which we've been getting that for many years with them. So we are looking to extend it, because our contract, I think, expires in November, so we'd extend our current contract until then, and then we would go back out to bid with the town. And we have, actually, I just wanted to let you know when we had, we've actually been working with Standard Power, we'd gone out to bid originally with them, and so we've been working with them as our third-party supplier since 2015, and also been getting hydro reimbursement since 2016. So there has been significant cost savings by using a third-party supplier, approximately twenty-three hundred dollars a month in savings, and through electrostatic reimbursement of the five cents equals approximately a net savings of thirty-five hundred, because we get a rebate back of about eleven hundred. So, the suggestion is that the approximate savings for the twelve-month period starting August one of twenty-one until the following August would be approximately sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars in savings, if we had not converted to them and continued to use the default rate through Eversource. So we are, we're looking to continue that contract, and then I'll be working with Mike Fowler again, and continuing the same service and going out to bid. So that was going to tie in with Honeywell. We also wanted to talk a little bit about, I wanted to give you an update in our maintenance department, Jeremy Jeremy and the maintenance department were out in the SAU parking lot today. If anybody drove by, there was a little bit of activity going on out there. You may notice that there is already a shed that's on the property there. They don't have flat enough property in order to have it up at the warehouse. They need flat pavement for that. So it's down at the SAU. That is our salt shed. And we purchase our salt through the town. And we also wanted to have a second material for icy parking lots. And so we just had a, we wanted to have a sand shed as well. So they did have the concrete barriers put in today, and the sand is going to be delivered. But I want to make sure that I thank Jeremy and the maintenance department, again, for an outstanding job, and also thank the town. They sent over their trucks and staff to help with that. We don't have vehicles to remove the concrete barriers that were on the delivery truck. So the total cost for that project was about $1,300 in order to have a sand shed, which we have not had for, we have just not been able to have one. So eventually, when we can pave a section up near the warehouse, Jeremy would like to move both of those sheds up to the warehouse and make it a little bit more convenient for the maintenance department. So thank you to Jeremy and the town for helping us out on that. They also, this week, placed an order to have three sanders for the back of our vehicles. We currently have salt spreaders on a couple of vehicles, and these are attachments that could go on the other vehicles that we have so that they can go around, they are not the big sanders. They can do small sections and areas. I think that each one was approximately $3,000. But again, we maintain all of the properties with our own vehicles. So those should be in, hopefully, within two weeks to continue with the property maintenance. I also just wanted to update, I haven't mentioned this for a while, about the number of work orders that they do. But back from June 1st of this past year, in 2021, they've had 662 work orders that have been placed. And they have, 622 have been completed since June. They have 32 that are remaining as a work in progress and eight new work orders that have not been assigned. So each time there's a work order in any of our buildings, whether it be they've got sink repairs or toilet repairs, or they have a leak in the roof, all of those go through School Dude, and they assign them to anyone in the maintenance department, including Jeremy. And some of them are dependent on specific skills of certain maintenance members. And so they, they have done a ton of work. That's a lot of work orders. So, and of course, those numbers are changing, changing daily. So I just wanted to update you on that. I just wanted to give, I also wanted to give an update on the food service department. Something that was a little interesting, I've mentioned before at the board meetings, the increased number of breakfast and lunch that they've been serving. And I did some historical research, research back to 2018. And in 2018, I took the same snapshot of the month of December. And in 2018, the average number of students that were served were 2,438. And for the, for the month, the number of lunches served for that month was 23,651, and the number of breakfasts were 5,776. Those same numbers were very similar, the same month in 2019. Again, pandemic. 20, December of 2020, last year, we had served about 14,000 lunch and 12,000 breakfast. And then when we look at December of 2021, we are serving 32,775 lunches, and we served 21,249 breakfasts. So a real significant increase in the number of meals that are being served, which huge kudos to Christina LeBelzak and her team members that are serving lunch. They are down about, I think, four, was it four, Mary Ann? Staff members, four or five? And the number of meals being served is just significantly more than, particularly the breakfast, going from 5,000 in 2018 to 21,000 breakfasts being served in one month, which is huge. So I just wanted to point that out. The food service department, I, we're actually going to post some pictures on Facebook this week about the meals that were served today. They were pretty outstanding, and we want to, sometimes you just want bragging rights on how great the program is doing. And we're happy that that many students, even though they have an opportunity to bring their lunch, that they're participating in our food service program. So thank you to them. I also wanted to mention, I was going to update ESAR. We have expended our ESAR 1, and I've mentioned that before. We are currently on ESAR 2. We've expended or encumbered, at this point, about 2.3 million. And we have more expenditures that are also going to be allocated to ESAR 2. Remember, we have several more years to expend that. So don't panic that it's not all been spent yet. We want to make sure that we're using the money appropriately and for the most important needs of the district. So we continue to work on ESAR 2 and we'll be moving on to ESAR 3. Again, once the facilities study is done, we can talk about, you know, some larger projects, particularly HVAC or air quality, any improvements that may need to be made. Those are projects that are totally appropriate for the ESAR 2 and ESAR 3 funds. So I anticipate that we will have expended, exhausted ESAR 2, and then we'll move on to ESIC 3 for those, for those type of projects. And I think that's all I had for tonight. Just to let the public know, all of the, all the information for the budget is all posted online for people to access. And as a reminder, the facilities assessment is also posted online on our homepage of the district. So it's over 400 pages for the facility assessment, so happy reading. May take you a while to get through, but fantastic job by LaValley Brenzinger and their, their group of staff members. It's a really well-done report, and I think that people will find it very interesting.
Thank you very much, Jane, for that update. And we will bring Honeywell back at our next scheduled meeting and have them provide an update in person. The next agenda item is FYI. I do not have anything unless anyone else does?
I do not.
That would move us on to committees. Manifest?
I would move to approve the manifest at a grand total of $1,926,320.20. General payroll consisting of $1,133,236.8. And general expenses consisting of $792,767.12.
And is there a second for that motion? That's a second by, a first by John and a second by Paul, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Do any board members have any other reports from other committees at this time? There, just so people know, there is no, there's no report from the facilities committee because normally we do meet on the same day as meetings, but we did not have a meeting this morning. So there's no, nothing to report out from a non-meeting. So with that, we will move on to delegations and individuals. I just ask that everyone come up and give their name and address for the record.
Good evening. Michael Leon, 84 Sainato Road. So I have a question. I actually had the chance to pull up the policy that you, that was read, J I C K. On that is cyberbullying. This is actually a great policy. I just read this and wanted to ask a favor of the town council, sorry, the school board. Could you please send this policy to the town council? I think this is something, if we can expect, if we can expect of students not to bully each other, it'd be nice to have this sent to the town council. I will be sure to bring this up with them next Tuesday. Thank you.
Good evening. Elizabeth LaFosse, Trent Road, Dairy. I'm not going to use you as a question-answer session this evening. I just have a couple of things to unpack quickly, so I'm going to kind of just fly through it here. I loved the next Charter School presentation. Kudos to them. I didn't know as much as I thought I did about next. Opened my eyes completely. I am so, so thrilled to have seen that presentation and heard from students directly. Moving on, the West Running Brook situation with the detention and the masking. You know, no, no secret here, unmask our children. I sit here. Since July of 2020, you know where I stand with this. What was seriously shocking was the use of compliance, how there had been a problem or an issue with non-compliance for about five months leading up to it. Then suddenly, an email went out with threats of detention and re-education about compliance. I don't think I need to say anything further. I know I speak for many people in the community that are outraged by what happened and feel like there was an overstepping. I just, I'm speechless, speechless. Moving forward with the masking scenario. When I sat here, August of 2021, and we renewed the reopening plan for this year, I did ask of the superintendent directly, what were the consequences or what was the policy for reprimanding students that could not or would not comply with? And I was reminded, it's a guideline, not a policy for the masking matrix. So where we're having non-compliance of a guideline that is clearly not fitting or serving all of our students and the student community, I'm very worried about what, what is happening. Our, you know, schools taking things into their own hands. Again, I'm not looking for answers. There's just so much concern with what is going on. Especially where, a couple of meetings ago, we did have the pediatrician and the advisory team talk about the CDC isolation, return to school, et cetera. I appreciate you, Brenda, trying to ask the hard question of how do we make sense of this? Because even myself, who is, you know, for mask choice, I couldn't even make sense of it. How are we releasing COVID-positive children possibly back into our school communities with the masks that the CDC says don't work? They're not stopping Omicron. So I, not to point fingers, but everyone here this evening, except for the head of Charter School, was wearing the N95. We need to figure something out here. I wish that there would have been pushback with, not pushback, but maybe just a question. Could we have delayed?
You have, you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. Could we have delayed that? You know, just to see what would happen, because I don't agree with just blindly following that guidance. Real quick, I read the Boston Globe, and I did see the MSNBC article. And I'm going to show you the picture of my precious daughter that I have been advocating for in front of you since July of 2020. She graduated non-pandemic kindergarten this fall, this summer, rather. And I want to remind you all of the face of the child that I have been here in front of you for two years now, representing. She wants to come here on her own behalf and speak to you and tell you how much she hates first grade, pandemic first grade, hates it. Please, everyone, I know masking is such a divided issue, but the children come first. And Ms. Cohen, respectfully, if this is how you feel about parents like myself that are advocating for this beautiful child, then I recommend your resign. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Richard Tripp, 44 Wyndham Road. I took a little bit of time today and looked at the LaValley Brenzinger report. It must be a problem with my computer, because if you look at the first page of the report, it's easy to read. Eight and a half by 11. You go to the second page, and it appears to be 11 by 17, shrunk onto an eight and a half. And I tried to print it this way, so it would at least make, and I couldn't do that. And the problem becomes, when you get to, the font is really small to begin with. But when it ends up on a page like this, you know, these old eyes can't see it. You know, has anybody else actually looked at this report? And it, it, it's readable?
I, I have not printed the report. I know our maintenance department has it printed out. But I can check with Cliff when we're in tomorrow and see what he can do about the font or see if--
It might be my PDF--
Maybe your settings or--
Well, like I said, I don't have any problem with any other PDF documents, but this is one of those things that, in order to read it, I had to make it big enough to where I could only see one half of the page. And then I shipped it over and I could read the other half. But, you know, as you said, there's like 242 pages in this. And that would be a little onerous to be doing that. But like I said, it might be my problem, but, you know. Have you seen it? Have you seen it? And you don't have any problems?
Richard, I looked at it online, and online with a PDF, you can just zoom in.
I know you can zoom in, but, you know. Anyhow, so anyhow. I apparently, you know, I've been snooping around trying to find out if the, the school district is actually a cooperative school district. And there's something that came up, I guess there's a bill in the, in the House to do something with the cooperative schools. And I'm wondering, is the school district a cooperative school district? Nobody knows? Yes, it is?
We're listed with the state as a cooperative.
The what?
We are, I believe we are listed with the state as a cooperative school district.
So, so you fall under the cooperative school district laws? Not the single school district laws?
Yeah, I, this has come up many times. Then this might be something worthwhile in a policy committee or something to review and have an attorney update it and see where that actually stands. That'd be my thought. Especially whereas the legislature is looking at some change to cooperative school districts. That way, we can get a final answer on this, exactly where we stand. That'd be my thought.
I've been told that the reason we were a cooperative school district goes back many, many years--
1952.
--when East Derry and Derry were separate, and that the need for a cooperative school district basically no longer exists because we're not cooperating with anyone. It's just our district and multiple schools. So it, the reason for it is different than, was different then than it is now.
Richard, you might want to also talk to Representative Leon. I know that she's been doing some research and has a lot of good information.
Yeah. So you guys consider yourself to be a cooperative school district? And you fall under the Yara State for Cooperative Schools?
Is that a defined statement or a question?
That's a question.
Right. And that question's been raised many times. And where is, is East Derry even its own district anymore? I think it's time to probably clarify this and have our attorneys review it, perhaps in policy.
Well, thank you.
I can reach out to--
And I know that, that you did ask, Ms. Richard, I know that you did ask if there are articles of agreement. And there are no articles of agreement. And I did ask Attorney Graham about this. There are no articles of agreement. They were not required when the district was formed. And as you said, it was formed in 1952 under a co-op statute--
Yeah.
That has since been amended.
It's since been superseded.
It's been amended, correct. And no longer resembles the statute as it-- And no longer resembles the statute as it existed in 1952. And you're already aware of that, but there were no articles of agreement. And I knew you had asked about that previously.
Well, I'd also ask about the, the RSA I sent you. It said either articles of agreement or bylaws. You know, and, and you seemed to, you didn't reply on my question about bylaws. Does the school district have bylaws? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Butch, Debbie Bowers, Road. I too would just like to say thank you to the next group. They are phenomenal. And just like Ms. Lafalche said, I didn't realize just how in-depth and what they have available. It's, it's awesome. At the town council meeting on January 18th, we received a COVID update from Chuck Hemmion, the director of the emergency medical services here in Derry. During that time, he shared similar figures to those that Dr. Peterson presented us here at the school board meeting on January 11th. The big difference between the two updates was that Mr. Hemmion mentioned numerous times that we are possibly seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. One of the very positive pieces that he shared with us was that according to the data at that point, we had had 7,150 positive cases of COVID in Derry, which equal roughly about 22% of all Derry residents. That 22%, when combined with the 48% vaccination rate here in Derry, puts us very close to herd immunity, which is a good, good thing. That means that the majority of our residents, including our students here in Derry have developed antibodies needed to fight the virus. And yet we have a principal from our middle school doubling down on mask compliance. Mr. Krieger, as we know, sent out an email to the parents informing the parents that students who repeatedly do not wear a mask properly will be sentenced to detention. Where, and I quote, "We will use this time in concert with our school nurse to provide more education for students to stress the importance of compliance." End quote. The importance of compliance, interesting phrasing. Goes on to write, and I quote, "Students deserve to understand the why of mask wearing and we intend to dedicate all of this time to that end." End quote. "Our students have been hearing the importance of mask wearing for two years now. I think by now everyone has an understanding of the whys regarding mask wearing. And even though, as according to the experts, these ones don't work." Mr. Krueger, Mr. Krueger, excuse me, talks about what our students deserve. So let's talk about what our students deserve. Our students deserve to learn grade, grade level math. Our students deserve to learn grade level reading. Our students deserve to learn how to think for themselves. Our students deserve to smile. Our students deserve to see other kids smile. Our students also deserve to be free of anxiety. Our students deserve to be free of depression. Our students deserve better. Over the course of the last week, I've had numerous conversations with families across our school district. Parents are at their wits' end. Okay, parents feel.
You can keep going, but just so you know, you have 30 seconds left.
I got like four sentences. Parents are feeling hopeless. Parents feel defeated. And what do they all have in common? They feel that their family has been abandoned by the school board and the school district. When they send email after email, never getting response, they feel abandoned. When they pour their hearts out to some of you in a lengthy email and get short three-sentence responses, they feel abandoned. When they are told that because the school is busy, the school does not have the time to do individual follow-up with kids on very, very serious issues, they feel abandoned. We are, we were recently told on national television that people in Derry do not listen to others. After having those conversations, those one-on-one conversations with those parents, those mothers, those fathers that I had this week, I think you may be right, Erica. People aren't listening. And it is time that we find people who will.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
Lisa Holgren, Warner Hill Road, Derry. I would just like to speak to the, I have a question first for the masking. I understand that the state said that each individual's school district was to choose their own masking policy based on their own, what was going on in their own community. And when, when we first talked about masks way back in the beginning of the pandemic, I seem to recall that all of the parents in the district got a survey asking what they thought would ha, should happen with masks. Now, because it was so long ago and because I spent most of my day helping sixth graders with masks, with math, I probably have the number wrong. But I think it was an overwhelming amount of parents that were asking for a mask policy. And I believe it was like 80, 87% or 82% of parents polled that answered the survey asked for a mask policy. And the school board responded by implementing a mask policy. Now, my understanding is, once the school board says we, we have a mask mandate and it's up to the schools to make sure that that policy and that mandate is followed, and it hasn't been revoked yet. We've talked about it a million times. We, we beat the horse and beat the horse and beat the horse. And the overwhelming response is that most parents still want the mask policy. I have five kids that have gone through Derry school systems. None of them were allowed to break rules, not a single one. And when I got a call from the school saying my child was breaking a rule, regardless of what that rule was, there was a consequence. We talk about kids and the, the mental health struggles that we're having in schools today are just astronomical. And I can tell you that more children are upset because the kid next to them is not following the rules and now they can't hear the teacher. And the kid next to them is not wearing the mask. And now they're worried because they're coughing on the whatever. And so the kids are not being made to follow the rules. It's disrupting the classroom. It's costing valuable class time. It's causing undue stress to kids who were in the middle of a pandemic. These are children. They're scared. They're nervous. They're anxious. And they just want to do their homework and they just want to do their classwork and they just want to hear their teacher and they just want to do whatever they have to do. Sanitize their hands, wear a mask, just to get through their day as safely as they possibly can. And I don't understand why we're still having this conversation. We've already had it 4,200 times. We've already decided that masks was the thing that we were going to do. Why are we still having the conversation? We're still in the middle of a pandemic. Case numbers are huge. And kids should have to wear the masks. It was a rule that was made and it should be made regardless of what the rule is, whether it's masks or whether it's.
Just so you know, you can continue, but you have 30 seconds left.
That's all I wanted to say. Either, either we have to enforce the rule or we have to not enforce the rule. But there has to be some kind, there has to be some kind of not chaos in the class all day. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Jenna Paradise, Hubbard Hill Road. I'm gonna sound like I'm beating a dead horse coming right after Lisa. So I asked my son today unprompted if things have been better within the classroom in regards to masks. I was like, oh, how's, how's everything been going? Because he's often come home complaining a little bit about it, saying that, you know, somebody that people actually pull down their mask on purpose to sneeze, which kind of defeats the purpose. But anyway, and I asked him, so how's it going? And he laughed at me. And I was like, well, I thought everything has been, you know, again, going a lot better. And he said, no. He said, there's probably, I don't know, like five or six kids in his, you know, his pod or his grade or whatever it is, that are purposely non-compliant, that do it to get laughs, that do it to get the teacher's attention, that do it for whatever reason. He said, there's one kid in his class that has a mesh mask and he doesn't understand how that's even like allowed or whatever. And I, and he goes, and now, I don't know what's going on, he goes, but they're not like getting in trouble anymore so they can just continue to do it. And I said, well, that's because they don't, they're not doing the detentions. And he said, what? I said, yeah, they stopped that. They did it one week or I don't even know if they actually did it. But a letter went home saying that everything's right as rain and they're not doing it anymore. And he just, he was like, well, that's not true. So, you know, directly from the horse's mouth, this is what's happening in the classroom. Now, I realize that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And I know, and just from seeing social media, that a lot of parents that were saying that they were going to be contacting school board members, they were going to be contacting Mary Ann, they were going to be contacting the president for all I know. And I think enough people in, who are for the masks, I think we've taken for granted that things were just going to continue the way that we thought that it should go. And we didn't speak up enough and we didn't say anything. So the squeaky wheel got the grease. I don't know how high it went up in the chain, but you can't tell me that over one thing that suddenly masks got so much better in the school when it's been months of non-compliance. So from enough, we want to talk about non-bullying. So enough parents called and enough parents complained and enough parents, you know, said for whatever reason, their kid can't do detention because they can't get picked up or whatever it is. We now have no consequences. So we've got a lot of parents who, not to use the term being a Karen, but enough people complaining to the manager to change up something that should have gotten put in place. If we trust Mr. Krieger, I know I got 30 seconds, I see ya. If we trust our principal and we put him in this position to do and set a policy line, then let's run with it for a while and let him do what his job is. And on the other hand, for parents out there watching who might be in support of something, you gotta start talking now because we can't take for granted the fact that things are going to go the way that we think that they're going to go. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Charlie, Winter Hill Road.
So what's your full name?
Charlie Henry.
Charlie Henry. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Anthony's dad over in the corner there. He spoke before you guys in the past. Geez, these guys all covered all sides of it. Even a little verifying this side from that side. So I'm not going to go into that. I'm just, my own observations, I've been here just a few times. And things I observed is, anyone that has a dissenting view, you guys listen like that and look, but I've never seen you try to address that. Just fight back against it. You guys have been faced with reason on the masks for a long time. So I'm like, why beat the dead horse there? It's foolish. It doesn't do anything. It's difficult for these kids. And we're kind of, at least from my family, we're done with the fear stuff. You guys are all operating out of fear and the kids are losing everything. Trips, the trip was gone last year. He looked forward to the trip this year, saved his own money. That's gone. He's been accepted to other schools. And I pushed him to give this school system just as much a look as we gave other places. We went, talked to all the teachers, departments, coaches, dug into it. I asked him to do that too and he did. But then you guys, the open house, you went virtual at the end, right? Got afraid again. And then he come down and said, that's it. Made my decision. So he's leaving the school system. Hopefully you guys get past the fear by the time my younger boy comes up through. You know, South Range School, grade school could use to get rid of the mask. And just get rid of the fear, get over it. You know, my girlfriend's the head of nursing. She's home. She just got through COVID, three shots. Lives with me. I don't have any shots. I'm fine. Going to work every day. You might get it. He might. Get over it. Get over the fear. Let these kids live. Just get over it. That's, that's all I got. So we lost, lost one in the school system. Hopefully you turn it around for the other one.
David Clapp, 3 Barclay Drive. So I take exception to calling it fair. I call it be rational and accept the fact that this virus is spreading quickly and rapidly. And I for one, and I've been up here since July of 2020 as well. That's when I first got involved in advocating that kids need to be in school. Remote learning was, we had to do it in the emergency situation. It did not work out well for anybody, my family, lots of families that I've talked to. I sat in a fiscal advisory meeting where I was handed a handout in November saying that 40% of our K through five children are reading a grade level behind. 40%. To me, that's a direct cause of remote learning or, and I know you mentioned part of that is kids coming into the district, you have no control over that and I get that. I'm with you there. But that's not everybody. It's probably a small percentage. So to me, that, when I sat in my first meeting, that handout was handed out and I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. And my daughter is one of those, you know? So we, we work with her and get her, get her up to that grade level. But we can't have kids remote learning. And if, if you have to wear a mask during one of the most contagious parts of this pandemic right now to keep kids in school, that's a small price to pay, I feel. And I'm not disputing, I talked to a lot of parents too. I talked to a lot of people too. I'm not disputing what you're saying, that people are fed up. I'm sure they are. But I have a lot of diverse friends in this town who are on both sides of the issue and I don't hear that, that particular problem. I'm not saying it's not out there. I'm just saying I, I don't hear it as much as it sounds like people make it out to be. And that's fine. And I could be wrong. But I was told we, we, I was told that a combination would be made for kids that are having trouble. I don't know what those combinations were, time. But long story short, you know, we need to keep our kids in school. And I, and what the, and what the doctor Peterson told us, masks is what work to do that. If teachers start getting sick, who's gonna, who's, we're having trouble finding substitutes. Who's going to teach our kids when everybody's sick? And then we're forced to go to remote learning. So that, that's where I stand. And, and I'm a person who is not a fan of masks. But I understand the realities of where we're at and where our kids are at learning. And then, and all the unfinished, and all the unfinished learning that's going on right now in our, in our schools is a, is a real problem. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in the audience? If not, we thank, thank everyone for their input and we will move on to other business. Does anyone have any other business at the board table? If not, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I do, Erica, so.
Oh, certainly.
Sorry. Sorry if everybody wanted to leave. I apologize. So I just, I just want to say like, I've got, Charlotte's an eighth grader at West Running Brook. So just kind of response to all of these. Because, you know, I've, I've been on the other side and sat there and felt like, hey, I'm talking at people and not much is really getting responded to, right? So I have been definitely from day one, understanding the need of masks and keeping kids in school, similar to David's kind of thought process. I came into this year being on board with masking because there are things like there was no vaccinations available for student or for kids that were above the age of five. And that's a large contingent of our school population. I think things have changed where this virus is more contagious. And yeah, the surgical masks, the cloth masks aren't as effective against Omicron. And I'm assuming that trend is probably going to continue with the other variants that are coming. And we do have a lot of positive cases, which is sad for those people that have been affected. I too have been, recently had COVID, went through my family as well. Luckily, minor symptoms. I do understand that there is a, there's still a large population of people that may be vaccinated, but there's also a large population that is not vaccinated either. I do think it is maybe start, time to start thinking about what the future is going to look like and what our threshold is. Because as, as, again, vaccinations are available for, for any kid that is the age of five and above. Those opportunities are out there for people to be protected and to take the precautions that they and their families think are necessary for themselves. I think at the beginning of the year, we looked at this and, and said, hey, you know, we will adjust. And I understand that positive cases are at an all-time high and that's very scary. And I'm not saying we need to think about or make a transition today. But I think as a school board, and I think in contingency with the COVID response team and I think working with like Dr. Peterson, the nursing staff, I think it's a conversation that we should continue to have and look at what options are available. N95 masks are the most effective. Those are A, very costly, B, very hard to come by right now. Those are, A, very costly, B, very hard to come by right now. So if we can't do that, then what other mitigation efforts can we do other than vaccinations for kids that are five plus? Or are masks, again, is, are the masks becoming more of a detriment to not only the classrooms, middle schools? Obviously, understanding that Justin has put in, put that policy in place or made that decision. Do I agree with the decision? I believe that there's, there are rules and we should be following them. I believe that Justin should have the autonomy to make decisions for his own building and that those necessarily don't always come to the school board or to the superintendent or any of the administration, because those are things that happen in real time as well. So I'm, I am cognitiv, I'm aware of all of these things. I think, I think we talk every week or every meeting that if you have a question that's going on with your teacher or with your student, and the first step is to go to talk to the teacher, and then it's go to talk to the vice principal or the principal. I don't know exactly what transpired from the time that Justin sent the message to Sunday's, Sunday afternoon's message as well. My assumption is maybe that, quote unquote, the squeaky wheel did get, the squeaky, yeah, wheel did get the oil. Maybe it is the process that is working, that people did reach out to the appropriate parties and let their voices be heard, and that the decision was made to maybe reverse that policy. Again, I think there's a lot of Monday morning quarterbacking going on right now where something happened. I think some of this is maybe blown a little bit out of proportion as well. We are balancing a lot of different things between the virus, between absent school kids, between absent teachers. We see that we're down four, four people in the food services, and we're doing over twenty thousand meals per month. We, as a school board and as an administration, we are thinking of all of these things and thinking of the best way to put, to keep the kids in school. Again, I think maybe start continuing this, or start thinking about a discussion of saying, hey, what does the future look like? And I'm not saying that's in two weeks, maybe that's a few months down the road. But I do think it's something that, again, we hear you. We, if you email us, my hope is that I respond in kind. And I hope that it is a message that you can at least respect. You may, we are not always gonna agree with things, but I'm open to have conversations. And that's just kind of what I think we've been doing. So that's just kind of all those things. I know, again, I sat there and felt like I didn't get a response. So I just feel like we owed it to those people that are here tonight and a lot of people that maybe voiced their, their opinions over the last few weeks.
Jonathan, I think you said a lot of good information that I agree with pretty much all of it. I think now, some of the anxiety and some of the difficulty with the continuation of wearing masks is, one point is, we don't see an endpoint. We, we not necessarily fear the unknown, but we, we, we want to see something that's out there. So I think it's a good time to start looking at what our end game is going to be. As you said, many variables have changed when we, the state and the district and the team built the matrix to create the mask requirements. We didn't have vaccines, you know? We didn't have a variant that, as far as we know, is causing less illness. It's infecting more people, but so far it's not as bad. So I think at some point, we, we look at that matrix and with medical advice, determine a point to where, when we can, when we can come off of this. It's not gonna be this week, next week, next month. It's probably a month or two away. If, if our path follows the same as South Africa and the UK, it's gonna come down as fast as it went up. So we could be in a decent situation before our April break, but who knows? But I think we need to start looking at end game and start getting some of that transparency out there. And I think maybe that will help some of the anxiety and, and some of the issues with, with this. I hate wearing masks, but I have to do it. I'm a pharmacist, it's, as a medical person, you really, you really have to. I have business in Nashua, and Nashua has a mask mandate. Last year, I became supposedly a deputized sheriff, and I had to, you know, wrangle people out of my store if they didn't have a mask. And running an independent business, I don't like anyone telling me what to do. So this year, at least, we're not police. It's, if someone comes in, we just say, you know, you can wear a mask if you want to. It's a mandate here, but we're not gonna make you so. But we also have protective barriers for our, for our staff. So we're comfortable with that. I want to get rid of these as soon as possible. But the promise I made when we took the vote was, we're gonna keep our kids in school as much as possible. And if that means we wear the masks, we'll wear the masks. We don't want to go remote. So I think, I think going forward, we just need to start looking at, at our end game, start planning this out, and give everyone, you know, some hope. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else for tonight? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn. And a second? First by Derek and a second by Paul, all in favor? Post? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.